Call me in order. Ask Councilman Cotton to lead us in the way to believe.
I pledge allegiance to my flag, the United States of America, and to the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Collins.
Councilman Poole.
Here.
Councilman Cotton.
Here.
Councilman Littles. Councilman Watson.
Here.
Councilman Barton.
Here.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Approval of the mention last meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Cotton, second by Councilman Barton to approve. Any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes, minutes are approved.
I want to begin this meeting with a statement on the recent events that have put our city in the spotlight for alleged events that have no place in the community as inherently supportive and loving as Bruton. I can speak as a parent and as a mayor of this city and condemn in the strongest terms any behavior that injures young people who are our greatest resource in the future of our country. I encourage members of our community to embrace those who are hurting and to work diligently to protect our young people from the threats they face from so many varied attackers in the present age. Our police force was notified of the allegations last week and immediately launched an investigation that resulted in the arrest of a suspect within three days. For their hard work, they are to be commended. As always, the goal of the city and law enforcement is to protect and serve our citizens. I assure you, the city is doing everything possible under the law to ensure that justice is served. I am confident that school board members and administrators will work diligently to safeguard our children's safety as we all continue to do everything in our power to meet this situation, learn and grow from it. The city council by law appoints school board members who then carry the tremendous responsibility of managing the school system. And the Bruton City Schools is consistently one of the best performing systems in the state and has gotten national awards as well. I pledge to lend every support possible to the school system as they face this crisis and emerge a better system than before. I am confident the people who love our city and its children will do the same. We have a beautiful city with the tradition of helping our neighbors in time of need. Bad things happen even in wonderful communities, but the best of those places are not defined by those terrible occurrences. Indeed, the true measure of our city will be in our collective response and renewed commitment to the welfare of our young people. Thank you. And I'd like to welcome the visitors that are here today. Several people that are having seen a meeting before, and I'm glad y'all could attend today. And approval of the agenda.
Agenda is up on the wall for the audience and the copy has a... or the council has a copy at their station. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? All in favor of the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes have it, agenda is approved as presented.
The next item on our list is a public hearing. As everyone's aware, I recuse myself from this although I preside over the meeting. So I'll now call the public hearing to order. And call Steve U-House to present.
Mayor and members of the council, on July the 7th, the Planning Commission of the City of Bruton met to hear a request from Kelly Properties concerning a parcel of property on Foshee Road that is located within the city limits of Bruton, Alabama. The original request was to rezone the darkened borders there, you see, to rezone that parcel of property from RA Rural and Agricultural to R5 Mobile Home District. There was opposition that showed up at the planning commission meeting. There was healthy conversation and discussion, and a compromise was reached that appeased some of the opponents, but not all. The compromise was to not rezone that R5 Mobile Home District, but B3 General Business District. The intention or the desired intention of the applicant is to rezone that property so that he can put an RV park there to help to meet the demands of the construction workers who'll be coming to town to do the work of construction at Georgia Pacific Mill. In that compromise, not only was there the agreement to not do an R5 so that it would never be a mobile home park there, but do a B3. And in a B3, an RV park can be there, but a mobile home park never could. In addition to that agreement, there was the stipulation that a fence would be put on the border of the property along Foshee Road to provide a buffer land... a concealed fence, a closed fence, to provide a buffer there so that folk could not see into what's happening at the RV park and vice versa, so that those residents of the RV park could not look out across the road to the residents there. And again, I say that some of the folk were appeased, but not all. So the hearing today is for the city council to consider the request to change that parcel from an RA to a B3. Some have said that that spot zoning... spot zoning could come into play if we were wanting to change that to a B3 out there and there was no other zoned district comparable or similar to that. But right on the corner of Foshee Road and Highway 31 is Craver's Funeral Home, and that is B3 there, so a B3 would not be unprecedented. In addition to that, the ordinance of the City of Bruton, the Land Use and Development Ordinance allows to change an RA parcel to any desired zoning district at such a timely manner. So it would have to be subject to the publication requirements. Planning Commission would have to come before you before it would be yours to act upon. If the council so desired to approve that this evening, it would require an introduction, an immediate consideration by unanimous consent of you all, and then the actual ordinance could be voted upon. But since the mayor has recused himself, that would make it impossible this evening for a unanimous vote on immediate consideration to be achieved. But those are the background details to it, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, sir.
And I ask if there's anybody that's present today that would like to speak either for or against this ordinance, if you're welcome to come to the podium and speak to the council. We just ask that you limit your remarks to approximately three minutes.
Hi. Hello. My name is Sherry Severt. I work at Austin Electric. My husband, Terry Harris. We live at 203 Foshee Road. This is the first time I'm seeing this map because we were unable to attend the planning commission meeting. We were on vacation. Am I correct in seeing my house is the first house on the left? And the RV park does not come down in front of that, my house? Am I correct in assuming that?
Is that point correct up there?
That the first house there would be my house?
Okay.
Because they were already cutting down the trees in front of my house? So I was curious.
I can't say that drawing is an approximation that they're cutting down the trees in front of your house. It very well may be. Because at the planning commission meeting, that parcel... it has to be probated, probate officer recorded, and the parcel map the county provides was not made available yet. So that's an approximation there.
So it could be coming down further, okay?
It could be just like, yes.
Excuse me for interruption, but the reason my wife's asking that is because they already plowed it right across from my house.
Yeah, that's what made...
They've already taken out about an acre of trees.
So, yeah, that's...
But we didn't know about it. It just woke up one morning and it started happening.
Okay.
So now we're concerned.
I just want to read... I know we only got 30 minutes. Our first major concern is the devaluation of our property. We've been there for 15 years and most of our neighbors for twice that length of time, and no one's going to want to buy our home with an RV park across the road. The value that a bank puts on a property is based on what's around it, and everyone knows that, correct? And I know when they first started clearing the land, and I woke up one morning and the backhoe was out there in front of my property, I called Jim Fountain and asked if he would please consider leaving a row of pine trees along there so we wouldn't have to look at the RV park every day. And he said that they had been advised not to leave any trees there, which, you know, really kind of made me angry because I didn't want to wake up every morning to see that. And I know during the planning commission, they discussed putting up a fence, and my question was, would that just be at the entrance or was that going to be the whole length of the RV park? The fence that went around it so we wouldn't see it? I had that question. And we're also concerned about the long-term plans for the RV park. After the GP construction ends in two to three years, then what are the plans for it? Will we be back here trying to rezone it to be mobile homes? Or will there be RVs there on, you know, people living in RVs on a permanent basis? Because as much as we love Bruton, other than the Blueberry Festival, there's not a lot to bring tourists here to camp. So that was one of our concerns. And also, there was a safety concern with people that don't stay very long coming and going there. Because our home was burglarized by someone who obviously watched us and knew our schedules because in a short window of time, when I left for work and my husband came home at lunchtime, our house was broken into. The window was broken, the door was open, and it was burglarized. And now there'll be people who have no ties to the community right across, 30 feet across the road from us. So that was a major concern. And I just think there has to be a more suitable place. If we do need the RV park, I mean, why not the industrial park? Or on out Foshee Road, there's 250 acres for sale that no one lives around. And I don't care if the land's developed, but put houses on it, not an RV park. And please, before you make your decision, just ask yourself, would you want to walk out your front door and look at 50 RVs every morning? Don't make that our view. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to speak?
My name's James Smith. This is Rhonda Smith. We own property on the west side and the north side of this piece of land here. The dirt is washing right now, is washing off this hillside down across our land, filling our pond full of mud. Our pond's the reddest... we've never seen our pond muddy as this is right now. When it rains, it just turns pure red, and it also is going down the ditch into Mill Creek. It's red as it can be, too. I think the EPA or whoever's concerned needs to take a good look at that. This is a picture that we... If we can get any help, I really appreciate it. And I'm sorry to be as sore to anybody about this property. I'm not trying to condemn anybody about this property, but I just... I really don't need it there because it's just going to devalue our property like these other people said. I just... I'm sorry. That's the way it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Kelly has asked me to work with him on this project for their group on the Twin Creek RV Park. When we met on July the 7th, we met with the Planning Commission. That meeting lasted for a little over an hour. There were several concerns that were raised that Mr. Kelly agreed to to try to meet people at a... certainly at a halfway, if not more than a halfway development. When it was over, the planning commission voted over after an hour's meeting now. The planning commission, who invented it all very well, voted unanimously to recommend that y'all go forward with this project. We are prepared to have Mr. Fountain here, Jim Fountain. We are prepared to go through the full presentation again, but... and we have the people here to answer any questions that you may have. But I think it will... as it's been talked about, Mr. Fountain has worked very closely on handling the physical problems and will continue to do so to make this better. We certainly agreed to go to a B3 change rather than an R5 change, which is requested. We agreed to the fence. We think that it has a lot of possibilities. One of the interesting things, and we certainly understand the concerns of the people that live in that area, but... John, can I see that point in just a minute?
If Mr. Kelly owns that property and... Mr. Smith, I think your house is along here, Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
All that is within the city limits and everything. But everything on this side is outside the city limits of Bruton. And if that property that Mr. Kelly has was across the street in the county, there is no regulation. He would not have to be going to the county anymore. He could just go out there and do it. So I think that upon Mr. Smith and his wife and him, and it's legitimate, and all the concerns are legitimate. No zoning regulations, no, in the county. So if he were to swap property, he could have done over there anywhere, and nobody would... he wouldn't even have to be going to the county. And I said it before, if we tried to do the annexation, no. The people in the county made it very clear to those of us that were there that day that they did not want to live in there that had zoning regulations. They just didn't want to be over there. So Jerry...
Yeah, I've got a few remarks.
And then you have Jim here, who could talk about the runoff and anything.
All right, I'm Jerry Kelly, and I'm speaking on behalf of Kelly Propst. Jennifer, would you come up here for these slides? All right, this is a city zoning district map. And what we're talking about is this piece of property right here. This is where Craver's Funeral Home is. This is Mr. Smith's land on the east and a little to the north. And this is Highway 31 south. And this is the Foshee Road going up this way. Let me see that other map. All right, this is a point of interest in distance map. The RV park is right here under this tag. And to the... this part, this chipping plan of GPs is 2.3 miles. There's a RV park, here's the chipping plan. And then from Twin Creeks to the Georgia Pacific entrance, which is right here, is .37 miles. And then the Express One, which is a trucking company, this is on this side of what we used to call a body beach. This is Express One right here. And then the Craver's Funeral Home, right here, is .32 miles. And to the industrial park, which is up here, is .82 mile. I... Craver's Funeral Home and the GP Mill were built in 1957. So you're talking about something 47 years ago and probably the more commercial traffic in this particular area than it is anywhere in Bruton except TR Mill Company. So this is the industrial park right here. So you just... this RV park surrounded by commercial enterprises. Go to the next. All right, this again is what we're talking about. This right here is Craver's, and this is Express One. All right, go to the next. All right. The sewer addition that RV Park's putting in at a cost of about $60,000 will be purchased by Kelly Propst and permanently attached to the Bruton City system. Once it's attached, I've been told by the accountant for the city that it becomes an asset on the financial statement of the city. Won't be on Kelly Propst's financial statement. It'll belong to the city. And like any other customer, we're going to be billed and treated just like we had no connection to this gift. The other thing that I think is important that we forget about is since 20... the year 2000, we've lost 151 people in the last 12 years in the city of Bruton, which is a 3.04% decline. If and when the census is taken, if you had 48 units in this RV park and 96 people in those units, you'd have an increased recovery of 1.8%. If a business is looking at a town to locate, the first thing I want to know is, is this town growing or is it going backwards? This is a chance for Bruton to actually recover and show a plus in growth that they hadn't had in 12 years. And this is 48 units. This is set out by the engineer for this proposed park. It's going to have a pavilion, bathroom facility, laundry building, ice machine, and landscaping. Jim, you want to give the...
Mr. Mayor, Councilman... I'm Jim Fountain, and Mr. Kelly asked me to help him on this project, and I've worked on it since last February. And I would like to... it is like a six... 3.63 acres of land, and it's... this does not... this is not a real good drawing of that. It's more or less a... I don't know if you need to see it, I'll be... like on this side of there, it's probably 100, 150 yards, like 700 feet on this side of the park. But we cleared some land there. We had a hard time finding about three or four acres we thought we could put a park in. It's real hilly, not very favorable. And so, well, Ms. McConaughey went out there with me, and we did take some trees down, I think closer to her house. But it is probably a hundred, a good hundred yards below that. The people that live across from it is Mr. Randy Jordan, Jehovah Witness Church, and Ms. Kelly. And they live sort of across ways from there. But I'd just like to speak just a minute on the nuts and bolts of the park. Where you have a little... it's 3.63 acres. Going to have approximately 40 to 50 sites. We got water from Kegel. We... Southern Pine is green and done some forem changed up forest to see what we wanted to put electricity there. And of course, we plan on putting a pumping station in it. We get approved and everything. And in the beginning, while we did make some mistakes, like we did not... we didn't know, or I didn't know, that I had to contact ADM about the pollution. And I don't think... we're about a quarter of a mile from the creek, Franklin Creek. But we went ahead and contacted Ms. Dennison of Mobile. She came up and drew the plan for us, and we got our engineer, Mr. Kermit George, to do us a plan up, and we sent it in. And we've been approved. It was last week. Catching the runoff ward and putting it in the right places. And so I think that's something we kind of put at rest, and we want to continue. Anything we see is nothing wrong. If you point it out to us, we'd be glad to take care of it that day or right after. But there's a couple of things I want us to think about in just a second. And anytime you do something for the county or a city or anything, you think about reasons you do it. One first thing I think is their need. And I know before we jumped into this thing, we went and we surveyed several construction companies, and they got something called a hot sheet. And this hot sheet, if they're going to do a job in your town, they ask you, what have you got for lodging? And what can you do as far as helping people find places to live? We thought that was in favor of having this park. We think it promotes growth and adds to the industrial potential of our city. The second thing is location. I think the location is about as far out as you could possibly be in the city. It is the city limits. We didn't know that start with, but we found it out. And we came back, tried to make sure everything was in order for it. We think it's right in the middle of all the industry, and I think that would really enhance us to have a park that our... these people that come in and work in these industries are putting new growth in town, it would be good for that. We think the revenue, as Mr. Kelly showed you a while ago, is a potential for a lot of revenue. And he just quoted, and he showed you how just being half-fulls and things instead of the full price, it's got great potential for bringing the city some money. And then, of course, our park is... we would like to think it's better than... we got some good rules and regulations. We're now in the city. We got... we're going to have lights, cameras, and I think that we can do all the things we need to do to make sure this thing's running right and running correctly. And of course, we want to be first class like the city of Bruton is. But it's not anything you can rent in this area. You can check it for yourself. In final conclusion, I guess, I'd like to say that we think that the Twin Creeks RV Park will offer the transit public a good economic lodging opportunity and promote industrial growth and development to enhance the greater Bruton experience for our visitors in our city and experience. And we want to show them the Bruton experience, like Bruton always goes first class. We want to make sure this thing's first class. I believe it would enhance construction and offer more for the people coming here doing work in our city. Is there any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else would like to speak? If not, I'll call the public meeting. Chair and turn in. Next item is an introduction of a rezoning ordinance.
Mayor, I would like to introduce ordinance number 14... oh, I can't... whatever it is, I can't see it. Two, which is a recommendation to the planning commission for the rezoning of this property.
Hearing no second, motion dies.
Under our business, we have approval of the annual city budget.
Mayor, I have a motion for resolution number 140825. Oh, we have a big consideration.
No, we didn't. We didn't have a second. Would you give a second?
No, I'm proud that budget will do the budget, right? What was the budget now?
Now. Need a second? No. Go ahead.
This is the spending level of the enterprise fund?
This is the spending level of the enterprise fund. Finally, the spending level of the reserve fund. So this resolution now, 14-0825, is the encapsulation of the spending limits for the budget. Mr. Watson has made a motion.
Yes. Thank you. I couldn't hear, just, excuse me.
He's made a motion to approve it.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought you added something to it.
No, what it was, when, uh, John put it up on the board, it was ready for approval, we already seen it, so I'll make a motion to approve the annual budget. Then when John called me, said, no, let's go with first, and then the mayor thought I was talking about the previous issue when we went-
Okay, okay.
But the motion, I was still putting the same motion out again to approve the annual budget.
You don't, a last second motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Watson, second by Councilman Poole to approve. Any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, budget is approved. The next item is an item that we've discussed on and off, and, uh, as everybody knows, the last dicennial census was in 2010. Uh, we've let the population settle down now, and, uh, we have decided that, uh, because we do have one heavy district as far as suspected voter registration, that it may be in the city's best interest to go ahead and redistrict for new districts. And, uh, SARPC, the South Alabama Regional Planning Commission, is a qualified third party that can do this for us. They have written a contract. Uh, I'm not sure what the timeline is, but the, uh, not to exceed limit for their contract is 18,500. That includes all the, the maps and the presentation to the council once the data's available. We, uh, suggest that this be approved.
I have a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Watson, second by Councilman Cotton. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Will they give us a list of criteria of what they're trying to accomplish or do?
Yes.
Or will the city tell them what our intentions are, what we're looking at doing?
They're, they're, they're gonna look at the law, and I'm gonna give them the, uh, last data that I have for the statistics for the last election, and then we'll take it from there, because I'm not familiar with all the law.
Okay.
But yes, we'll, we'll, we'll combine the data and they'll get with it. You'll probably have two or three, uh, courses of action when it's presented to you. Any other discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes and, uh, document will be signed. Every year, the U.S. Geological Survey sends a joint funding agreement, a JFA, for three particular telemetric, uh, antennas that show us the flood levels of Burnt Corn Creek, Murder Creek, and the Kaneka River. We don't really have a, an interest in the Kaneka River, except for the fact that GP does. So, over the past few years, GP and the city has split the cost of that one gauge. The city picks up the cost of the other two gauges, as shown here. So even though the total cost is shown at 25,150, the county also pledges 5,000. So the total cost to the city is 12,200, and for the sake of a possible weather disaster monitoring, we recommend that, uh, this joint funding agreement be approved for the next fiscal year.
Making motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Cotton, second by Councilman Watson. Any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Next item is, is, as you're aware, we've already done one round of city streets paving that the City of Bruton is paving for. We refer to non-A trip. We received a grant from the State of Alabama for over $2 million for paving of streets that, that paving is not these streets, that's some additional streets that will occur later in the year. Uh, but these are streets that the City of Bruton will be paving for in this round. There is another round, uh, of streets to come after this one, but we're just referring this as round two.
I have a motion for the passage of resolution 14-0825. 0825.
Dash one. Have a-
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Poole, second by Councilman Watson. Any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, non-A trip, round two is approved. Any announcement at this time? I have no comments at this time.